Hop on it right now. Okay. Well, good morning, everybody. I hope you have all been safe and sound. And then those of you that are working through health issues, we're glad to see you on the call and that you are on the mend. So welcome to everybody. Again, this is the January Regional School Board Meeting of Maggie L. Walker Governor's School. I'm going to share my screen so that everyone can see the agenda here in just a moment. There we go. And we will be rolling through the agenda. So we will begin. I know virtually we've kind of skipped on this, but we're going to do it anyway, just for consistency. We are going to have a brief moment of silence. Thank you very much. We will dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance since standing on Zoom is probably not an easy thing to do. We do have an introduction today. I do not believe that she is on the call. She's not on there. I didn't see it. But the City of Richmond has appointed Ms. Mariah White to be the City of Richmond School Board Representative. I received the email this morning. We sent the links out to her, but she probably didn't get them till this morning. So she might not even have known that we were meeting today. But the City of Richmond has appointed Ms. Mariah White to be School Board Representative for us. So the first item of official business is the approval of the agenda. The agenda is there in front of you, and you certainly have had access to it as well. So I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
That's Ms. Barber from New Kent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Looks like Debbie Bailey from Chesterfield was the first one to hop in. Ms. Bailey is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The agenda is approved. Ms. Marshall, since it was unanimous, do you need to do a roll call on approval of agenda?
No.
Excellent. The next item is the election of the Chair for the School Board, for our School Board. Just give a little bit of background. Ms. Ogborne is now the Chair of Henrico County School Board. So she is resigning from our board and is looking for a person to step up and be willing to answer that call. Mr. Wright from Goochlin County has been serving as the Vice Chair and has agreed to step up and serve as the Chair of this board. So I would open the floor for nominations or discussion on the election of the Chair for the Maggie L. Walker Regional School Board.
Bob, I'll make the nomination of Mr. Wright from Goochlin as Chair.
Nomination has been made by Ms. Ogborne from Henrico County. Is there a second?
Valerie Ayers will second.
Sounded like Valerie Ayers from Powhatan is seconding the motion. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, John.
Absolutely.
Do you like to vote?
I think it is time to vote. All in favor of Mr. Wright, assuming the position of Chair of the Maggie L. Walker School Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Like sign? The motion passes. Mr. Wright, congratulations. I will do everything I can in my power to make your job as easy and smooth as possible. And I am now handing the proverbial gavel over to you, sir. And you are now running this meeting and relieving me of this burdensome responsibility.
This is as close as I have to a gavel at some house. So next up for us is going to be the election of a Vice Chair. Board members, are there any nominations? We have. I'm sorry?
I said, we have a problem.
Well, then perhaps we switch this to a discussion about how to proceed amongst the board members. I know that earlier, prior to the meeting, there was some discussion. I know Linda had made her case about her schedule, but I didn't know whether there was anyone else who would be willing to step up and help us out as a Vice Chair. Basically fill in if I can't be at a meeting, which does occasionally happen. So anyone willing to help out?
Don, I know that I mean, you're from a smaller district and I kind of like the thought that a bigger district, but I know that a lot of people from the bigger districts have already served in that position. So is there, I mean, I hate to put names out there, but maybe someone from Chesterfield that that hasn't served as in those positions yet? That's a large county.
Um, I just finished a year of Chair at Chesterfield County School Board and unfortunately I have two scheduled surgeries that I'm not sure how they're going to impact. So I was reluctant to put anything on my plate because of those. I have a torn rotator cuff. And yeah, yeah. Right, right. So I'm reluctant to put my name out there to do anything in addition to just being a member of the School Board. I appreciate the concern that we have here, though. But that is literally my reason.
Mr. Ryan, if I could maybe make a quick suggestion that might just help us out procedurally a little bit.
Right.
In the past, there's sort of been a tradition of the Vice Chair becoming the Chair down the road.
Right.
That that's not written into policy as far as I'm aware. It might not be a bad idea to maybe frame this discussion just a little bit in the sense that we, what we're asking for is someone that could cover for Mr. Wright if he wasn't able to be there. And I can assure you, if you talk to anybody on the call here that has been a Chair in the past, Ms. Barbara, Ms. Ogborne, Mr. Axel, in my tenure, we, we, it is not a burdensome responsibility. We handle everything. We put the agendas together. We handle all of the paperwork. We've got a pretty good group of folks here that don't create a lot of board actions that require a whole lot of stressful activity. It's not the same as being the Chair of your respective districts by a long shot. You have served as Chairs and on Boards in your respective districts. Just being a board member in one of the districts, I can almost guarantee you is a lot more work than what being the Vice Chair just to support Mr. Wright. My fear is that Mr. Wright is a very active gentleman. He's got a lot going on and there are occasional times where he might not be able to be there. And we only have six full board meetings a year, just being one of them. It would be very, very challenging for us if we were unable to meet because we didn't have anybody that could chair the meeting. So I guess what I'm offering up is if someone is willing to be able to take this on, you could take it on with a very fair understanding that you were not obligated to be the full Chair at the end of Mr. Wright's tenure, if that's agreeable to the board, then maybe we can find somebody that would be willing to just sort of be you know, there on paper, so to speak. And we would certainly support you and not make this a time consuming endeavor the way I'm sure it is in your own district. So I'll, I'll just kind of toss that out there as a framework, if that helps at all.
Bob, I'll help John.
Thank you, Harwood. I appreciate that. So.
All that is a generous and much.
It is indeed.
Yes, it is. Thank you so much.
Would someone be so kind as to make a motion to that effect?
I would like to nominate Ms. Harwood Hall to, for Vice Chair.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Valerie, thank you so much. So the nomination on the floor is for Ms. Harwood Hall as the Vice Chair. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? This is Marshall. I believe we've got a unanimous choice there. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you.
Harwood.
Thank you.
It's a prestigious position. And we'll see to it that you have all the proper accolades that go along.
If we're ever able to meet on campus, the Vice Chair position does come with a reserved parking space.
Oh, okay.
You should have said that first, Bob.
That would have changed the entire landscape, no doubt.
Sharing the agenda here so you can roll through it.
Yeah, thank you. I've got it on my computer too, just as a backup. So next up is the election of the Board Clerks. I was trying to open the link. It did not open for me, but I assume that it is the suggestion of the Director that Ms. Barbara Marshall and Ms. Megan Perez serve as clerks to the board?
Yes, sir, it is.
So board members, do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the nominations for Board Clerk and Vice Clerk.
Right.
For Barbara Marshall and Megan Perez to serve in those respectively.
Thank you, Ms. Barber.
Mr. Wright, I'll second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. We've got a motion and a second. Board members, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposition? Now, then that moves us to election of the Executive Board for 2021. Can you open the link that we have there?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
I need to hop back and forth between the. There we go.
Thank you. So the Chair and Vice Chair are typically a part of this, if I'm reading this correctly. And for other regional board members, so this past year, let's see, it says four other, but I only count five listed for this past year. So obviously I think I will be joining and Ms. Hall will also be joining the Executive Board. Is there, and she has already been serving on that. Is there any strong feelings about who else would like to be on this? Can we move the same people forward?
I'm happy. I'm happy to continue my position on the Executive Board. This is Sarah, Barbara.
Yep, yep. We can see you. Thank you. And Nikki, is it okay with you to stay on?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thank you so very much. Mr. Pritchett, would you be willing to serve again?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. So it says five members. I'm sorry. It says Chair or Vice Chair. That's my fault. So we, that's the five. Would somebody be willing to make a motion to approve?
So moved. Lynn Highslop.
Thank you, Linda. Do I have a second?
Second. Valerie Ayers.
Thank you so much. Board members, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Great. Thank you. So we've gotten some of our agenda taken care of, the ones that made me the most nervous. So thanks so much for your help. So then we have Dr. Lowery, the announcement of the 2021 Superintendent Steering Committee Leadership.
Yes, sir. The Superintendent Steering Committee met this morning and unanimously selected Dr. Jeremy Raely from Goochlin County to serve as the Chair of the Steering Committee.
That's great. Thanks very much, Dr. Raely. Let's see. Next on our agenda, we've got approval of the minutes. I know that each of you has had an opportunity to review those. We have a motion to approve.
So moved. Nikki.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogborne. Do we have a second?
Second. Debbie Bailey.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Great. I see we don't have any recognitions. Is that still true, Dr. Lowery?
That is correct, sir.
Or public comments. So we're zooming through this. Pun intended. Let's see. So then that brings us to the Director's Report, Dr. Lowery.
Yep, let me go ahead and pull that up for you real quickly here. Come on. All right. I'm sorry. It's just, it's so awkward having to flip back and forth between these. You'd think we'd be good at it by now, but not. And here's the Director's Report. All right, just a few items that I want to highlight. One slight adjustment that does not require board action. We've added a reading day at the end of this month to give our students and teachers an extra day to kind of wrap up the first semester. It's all still virtual, so no impact whatsoever on the master calendar, but it just adds a day to be able to catch up, make up work, get things all straightened out and tightened up before the first semester rolls over. That's pretty important because especially for our seniors, these first semester grades do go to colleges as part of application packages and follow-up. So we want to make sure that those things are all nice and clean. Quick review of the budget calendar. We held a public forum on December 8th that was not widely attended. So I do not have anything to report from there. We have been working hard on the budget and I spoke to the Superintendents this morning and stated that I should be able to send them the mock-up of our budget by the end of next week and probably by Tuesday. As well as the financial advisors that we have from our partner districts, they will all have that information. So you will all be able to take a look at it and I'll send it to the board members as well, so that by the work session in February on the 18th, we will be able to have a meaningful discussion about the budget and be able to move forward on it. It's shaping up to be very, very solid, very conservative, very appropriate. It's going to take care of our needs as well as compensate our folks adequately. And I think we can do this with numbers that are not going to be out of bounds for anybody and we should be in good shape. There'll be a public hearing or public opportunity for comments on the budget and we're proposing to be able to approve our budget or have it ready for approval by April. So March would be the presentation and then April will be the final passage on that. One adjustment we made because of COVID restrictions is our community service hours. Normally they require 140 to graduate. Unfortunately, it's not the easiest thing in the world to do right now to do community service. We still have plenty of opportunities for them, but a lot of places out in their localities are not taking volunteers right now. So we reduced the required number for community service hours for the class of 2021 to be 110 hours. I don't think anyone's going to have any difficulty meeting that number. But that'll allow for our folks to be able to have that requirement taken care of. I do have some information on the potential admissions class for 2025. Contrary to what conventional wisdom would have been, our application numbers went up significantly this year despite the COVID restrictions. We have 1,395 students applying to Maggie Walker to be part of the class of 2025. That's, that's up by about 150 from last year. And so we are really excited about that. They are in the process now of working on their essays. And they're due back at the end of the month and the Planning Committee is working through all of that and will start assessing those in February and March 5th, I believe is still the target date for mailing out the acceptance letters. I was also very pleased to see that the percentage of underserved students to apply had gone up significantly. We're happy to see our Hispanic numbers, which is what the way the federal government refers to them as opposed to Latinx. Hispanic number is up to 8% of our application pool. That was around 3% last year. And our black, non-Hispanic numbers up to 19%. That's up a little bit from last year as well. So we've got a very diverse applicant pool and we're looking forward to seeing where that leads us down the road in terms of our admissions. A couple of dates here to save is April 24th, the Virtual Night of the Dragon Auction. Unfortunately, we're not able to have a live Night of the Dragon for the foundation, but we're having a virtual one. And certainly Ginger O'Neil, who's going to talk a little bit in a couple of seconds, may have a couple of things to say about that as well. So certainly keep that calendar open. Just a couple of technical things. We're going to continue to keep maintaining our current legal representation as well as our association with the Virginia School Board Association. We do not pay for legal representation on retainer because we don't really need them much, but we do budget for it. And they have been very, very helpful to us. Stacy and PAC over our excellent, excellent advisors and council. So we're going to continue working with them. One of the pieces that's very important, it was a specific part of our strategic plan was to allow students a way of providing feedback for their experiences here at Maggie Walker. That's a key piece of our welcoming component of the strategic plan. The School Advisory Committee put together a panel, a team to develop a survey for our students on climate focusing specifically on racial climate. We partnered with VCU, their office of, and I can never get this right, but inclusion, it's their Office of Inclusion and Equity, I believe, vetted the survey and provided feedback. So we got some professional help on that and that survey is out right now with the students. I believe it closes this week and we'll be able to report back some data and some experiences of our students. So that's in direct support of our strategic plan. And then this is something I'm very excited for. And I know that Wendy DeGroot is attending this meeting. Perhaps you've heard on NPR, on National Public Radio, there's a project by StoryCorps called One Small Step about it's an initiative that's allowing people from contrasting political viewpoints to have one-on-one discussions. And there are several sites around the country where this is being done and they end up, they ended up choosing Richmond as one and then Maggie Walker as one as well. And these things include the option of being archived in the Library of Congress. It's an amazing, amazing opportunity for us to be able to kind of sort of reconcile differences and have conversations, have productive conversations with people that think differently than we do on both sides of the political spectrum. It is a wonderful opportunity and to be selected, to be able to participate in that is just it's just something really, really special for us. And so there's a link there that you can go to to see how the process works. Of course, it's 100% voluntary and there's no obligation for anyone to participate if they don't want to, but it is a neat opportunity for our kids and our staff as well to be able to participate in this really, really cool project being done by StoryCorps. And then finally, I've just got some AP Scholar information here. Total number of AP Scholars was 290 with an average score of 4.23. That was down just a little bit from last year, but given the fact that they completely redid how they did AP tests last spring, it was not surprising at all. You know, we had 50 AP Scholars, 52 with honor, 188 with distinction, 30 national AP Scholars. So again, a total of about 290 with a score of 4.23. Every indication that we have right now from the College Board, and I saw a big email yesterday on this, is that they intend to do in-person testing this year, although possibly an option to take it virtually. My thought is that by May, if everything goes the way we want it to go, we should be in a decent position to be able to have students take the test on campus, which is what they're used to doing. And I think just that familiarity with being able to take the test in the way that you would normally take it will boost the scores back up just a little bit. So I think the school year of 20 and then carrying over to the first semester of 21 is just going to have a big asterisk next to it historically. And so it's not surprising to see some of the numbers move just a little bit. And as of right now, we've got 559 students signed up to take AP tests this year for a total of 1,606 tests. I doubt very much that that number will hold, but because the AP folks, College Board, make you register in the fall now instead of the spring, that number gets artificially boosted up quite a bit. I would suspect that that would probably end up landing somewhere around 1,300 when the dust settles. But right now we have 1,606 tests that we are going to have to account for in some capacity. Let me pop back over to the agenda. Sorry. Coming events. I can click on this. There's not a whole lot that's coming right now, to be honest with you, until we're able to get the kids back on campus. Again, winter sports start on the 14th of February, or I'm sorry, fall sports start on the 14th of February and we are participating in in those. And again, we are in the process right now of working through the applications that gifted coordinators and the counties have been managing that and those close out at the end of the month. So are there any questions about the verbal updates that I've put out here? And if not, I am going to put this over to Ginger O'Neil, who is the Executive Director, the new Executive Director of the Foundation. Ginger, do you need me to share the screen and put that report up there for you?
Let me see if I can do it. So I've got the report here.
All right, I'm making you a co-host.
Okay, thank you.
You got it. So if you're able to do that.
All right. Can you all see my screen now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
There we go. All right. Well, thank you for inviting me to be here this morning. As I know, most of you know, I'm the new Executive Director. I started at the end of September. I'm also a parent. I have two fairly recent graduates from the classes of 2017 and 2019 who are now thriving in college and will tell all of you that that is largely due to the fact that they had such a great education here and a great experience too. So thank you for all you've done to make that possible. It helps to make my job easy. Selling this school for me is super easy. As a first generation college person myself, to see my girls and the experience they had here and their experience they're having now in college because of it, it's just amazing to me. So this year, as you know better than I, it was a very unusual year for schools and so it was for the foundation. Losing Susanna in September was, you know, sad for all of us, but I was very excited to get to jump into her position and continue on the great work she did. At the urging of our alumni who hate when we kill trees by mailing them things and also because of some of the uncertainty with the postal service over the end of the year with the election and all, we went to an online impact report this year. I have some printed out versions that I'm happy to share with you all if you'd like them and for some of our donors who prefer to have something they can put in their hands. But so I thought this morning I would just quickly walk you through that in case you haven't had time to sit down and read it and read through it, you know. The cool thing about this is it gives us a lot of options for kind of showing off. Here's our empty, our empty bench because the students aren't here this year. Although I think they will be soon, I hope. So we just begin with my introduction where I explained that, you know, this was a very different year for all of us and the pivot that the foundation made. Most of our things in, over the summer, obviously, and in fall with the school's closure were canceled, a lot of the travel and all of that. So our pivot at that time was to help make sure that all of our students had the technology they needed to continue to participate in school. We also stepped in and helped with some groceries and food items for students until all the districts got all of that up and running. And we also provided over the summer quite a bit of professional development money for teachers who were very interested in learning how to teach in their subject matters virtually better than they felt like they had maybe in the spring or and I'm always amazed at how willing our teachers are to continue to learn and to get even better at what they do. So the foundation was happy to help with that. About Us here. Site's a little slow, sorry. Very slow. All right. Well, the About Us lists who we are and gives the Board of Directors and all of that information. Here we go. This is better. Again, fun photos. Class of 2020 profile, we included this year. I encourage you to go look at it. The stats are impressive in and of themselves. It's also kind of fun because we included some photos of the kids from the class of 2020. Trying to sort of take care of those kids wherever we can, since they got ripped off at the end of the year. And then for the financials, we actually ended up last year, luckily there's Pat Taylor. We ended up last year, fortunately, just a tad bit in the black largely due to the fact, of course, that giving was down, but so were some of our programming. So we were fortunate. We also got the PPP, so that all factors into that. Our annual fund campaign was down a little bit, but that was to be expected. We actually ended. We paused direct fundraising in March when the school closed, thinking that understandably, a lot of folks would be focusing on other things for their donation dollars. So we picked that back up and we had a record-breaking December 1st day of giving. I think we have a lot of wonderful supporters who were looking for ways to get plugged back in with us and did so. So we had, we came out. So we had, we came out just fine with our revenues going down a little bit, but our expenses also going down. We also went from being a two-person shop to a one-and-a-half-person shop, so our personnel costs have gone down. Our endowments continue to do well as the market does well, so that's helping us out a lot and gives us a good cushion. Our focus now is on really just being ready as the kids come back to help them. We anticipate some increased student financial aid needs, and we're ready to help those. We also have been funding quite a bit of classroom enhancement grants, but we anticipate those going up as we may have some technological needs within the school, and we're ready to help with those. And as Dr. Lowry said, we are pivoting our main fundraiser for the year to a virtual event, which will be on April 24th. We encourage all of you to get involved with that, it's going to be great. We're partnering with two local restaurants to provide dinner to go to anyone who participates, sort of as a thank you to them for the support they've given us over the years. It looks like it's going to be Perch and Barrio at this point, so you'll have two great dinner options. I'm also open with the new virtual format to be able to include more of our alumni and also do a stronger focus on our mission with some of the programming that we can do that way. So I encourage you to mark that on your calendars, we'd love to have you guys there, and may even reach out to some of you to ask you to get involved in some of our pre-recorded programming for that. So questions, comments, thoughts?
First, Ms. O'Neil, thank you so much for the presentation, and I really like this digital format. It's very, you got great visuals, very easy to sort of digest. And so I know there was a lot of work that was behind it, so I thank you very much for that. Board members, are there any other questions or comments?
I agree with the, with the quality of the virtual format. I think it's very strong and easy to, easy to read, and the graphics illustrate well what the, what the success is.
Thanks, we had a great designer work on it, so.
We appreciate all the work that went into it, both from your designer and from you.
Thanks.
We appreciate all the information that it contains as well, so thank you very much.
I would also like to encourage people, especially since it's easy to participate virtually. I've been to a few of these in person, and it's an outstanding experience. So if you have the time and can make, make the event, I would encourage you to do so.
They're a lot, they're a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Great stuff. Well, then, board members, if it's okay, we'll move on in our agenda to the unfinished business. Dr. Lowry, we've got a report in regards to the strategic plan.
Yeah, this is just the board update for the strategic plan that we do in our board meetings, again, it's using the document there. Red means has not been started, blue is an updating, green is completed. Again, the areas where we have made some progress in the blue, examining the structural barriers that prevent students from being here. And again, we're going to talk about that a little bit more in a couple of minutes. Here, you can see facilitating student input and feedback, we're working on that now with our survey. We are working with the partner districts and providing data to the state on our compliance with the budget item in terms of being able to report data on increasing percentage of historically under-staffed students. That's a work in progress. One, expanding dual enrollment, Dr. Ellis has been working with that. We have a meeting set up, I believe, next week with VCU, or the week after, to explore that program some more. So we're still taking a look at that, as well as teacher-created courses. One thing that we're actually excited, we finally have a green item, and that is to incentivize the use of the current online payment system. We have put in our budget that we're going to present absorbing the, what they guys call the convenience fee for people to be able to pay their student fees online. This year, we did that as well as part of our Using Cares money for that, and it was a tremendous help to be able to have students pay for their fees online and not have to bring checks in. It's a far better streamlined process, it moves the money to the accounts quicker, we're able to reconcile accounts faster. And I believe a couple of our partner districts do this already, and I want to say Goochland is one that does this. It's just money well spent. So we are putting that in our budget, and we are able to actually take one thing on our strategic plan and say that we have completed it. Everything else is kind of a work in progress. A lot of this stuff, to be completely honest, is very difficult to do with the students in the virtual environment. But as soon as we're able to get kids back on campus, I think we'll be able to start making some real progress on, on the plan. A lot of it involves outreach, a lot of it involves getting out to other schools, and when those schools are also virtual, it just makes it, makes it much more difficult. But I am very confident that we will continue to make good progress on the strategic plan, and I appreciate the board's indulgence in allowing us to take a couple of minutes to update you each time we meet so that that document and the work that went into it is not just something that sits on a shelf. So are there any questions about any of the items on there?
Not hearing any, then I think we'll move ahead, if we can, to our consent agenda. Board members, is there any need to call out any particular item in the consent agenda? Or could we take these as a slate?
You certainly can take them as a slate. I would put one thing out there, and I know that she's probably not going to appreciate me doing this, but it's important that we, that we make this announcement. Dr. Ellis is going to retire this year. She has served Maggie Walker with distinction for many, many years and will be a massive loss, not only of instructional knowledge, institutional knowledge, but on a personal note, she's a good friend and has provided me with a tremendous amount of support and feedback, and has really tirelessly worked to make Maggie Walker a better place. And we will certainly miss her greatly, although I would be lying if I did not say there was a serious element of jealousy at watching her go through the process of taking care of all of the mechanical things that need to go with retirement. But that is one item. Other than that, the rest of the items, I think, are pretty routine. But I did want to call attention to Dr. Ellis, and we will be putting together the mechanics to do the interviews for her replacement probably by the end of February. So that's the only item in the consent items, I think, that does bear some specific recognition.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations. Yes. Thank you very much. We will definitely miss you.
Yes.
Well, thank you. So board members, then, do we, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. So we've got a motion, a second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to our action items.
Yeah, if you will give me just one moment, I'm going to pull them up, because I do think you do need to kind of take a peek at each of them. I will say, as I'm doing this, that I did play the Powerball last night, inspired by Dr. Ellis's retirement, and I'm not lying to you. I got three numbers right, two numbers plus the Powerball, and that is worth $7. $7 is what that will get you. So unfortunately, I am unable to retire along with Dr. Ellis. In fact, I really can't do much of anything with $7. But it was exciting to see the numbers. So yes, we do have several items, and again, I'm sorry for distracting us. I do have several items here that do require votes. Most of them are technical relating to code of conduct for the school board and the clerks. The first item is the code of conduct for the school board.
Okay. Board members. We have a, and we have it on the screen now. I assume that all of you are familiar with our code of conduct for the board members. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Valerie Ayers.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Do we have a second?
Sarah Barber, second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barber. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. So then we have the code of conduct for our clerks for this year. Again, I assume that we've had an opportunity to review this. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchett, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Hall, and I saw a couple of hands in there too. We've got a motion, a second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So then we've got our calendar for the 2021 year.
I'm pulling this one up for you, just so you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, board members, you see in front of us the proposed calendar for the year. Is there any discussion? And if not, do I have a motion to approve?
I think Mickey made a motion, but she's on mute.
I'm sorry. One of those Zoom things. I move we approve the calendar as presented.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. So we've got a motion, a second, board members, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And Dr. Lowry is doing a great job, he had that up in front for just a moment, all the policy committee members. I know I enjoy doing that, and so board members, if I could get a motion to approve?
So moved, Debbie Bailey.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bailey. Second?
Second.
Okay, I'm not certain who that was, but I did hear a second. Thank you so much, Ms. Heisler. Got a motion, a second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Great, any opposed? Thank you. See, this is now the wellness committee membership.
There, there we go.
Okay, we can see all of the committee members that are proposed.
And we'll have students and parents once we actually can get them on campus.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Our board members, do we have a motion?
So moved, to accept.
Thank you. We have a second?
A second, Sarah Barber.
Thank you very much. Board members, we've got a motion, a second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, great, we're now.
May I ask, I'll be just a moment, Ms. Heisler, did you make that motion?
I did, Valerie Ayers, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Marshall, we caught up?
Yes.
Okay, great. So then this is the finance committee membership. Quite a list there. Board members, do we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the finance committee as presented.
Great, thank you, Ms. Barber. Have a second?
Valerie Ayers will second.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ayers. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are murdering through this. So now we have the school advisory committee membership.
Be there in just a second, here we go.
Hey, there we have, you see the list in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve?
This is Sarah Barber, I move we approve the school advisory committee members as presented.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Hall?
Yeah.
It was, okay. Trying to recognize voices, not always easy. We've got a motion in the second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We've got our way through the action items. This brings us to items for board review and discussion.
I'll just highlight, if it's okay, I can just highlight them real quickly without having to get too deep into it.
Thank you.
The first item, this again would be voted on at the next meeting. Dinwiddie County is requesting membership in the Maggie Walker community, and they want to start sending us a couple of kids per year, so that will be one item for discussion. The second item is a regulation on health and dental benefits. It's, we found that we are on the fringe of not being in compliance with the affordability component of the Affordable Care Act, and what this policy is going to do is clarify that health and dental benefits will not be available in the future to part-time employees at the 0.2, 0.4, 0.5, and 0.6 level, because the amount that we are able to subsidize, if you do it comparatively at that level, puts us out of compliance. However, anyone that's at 0.7, 0.8, 0.9 or such, we would still be able to provide benefits to. We are going to grandfather in existing employees that fall into this category. There's only a handful, a very small, small handful, so the impact on budget would be minimal at a time where we have COVID and a lot of health things out there. The last thing we want to do is rip somebody's health insurance, who's been a staff member with us, away from them. It's just not the right thing to do, and the financial cost to be able to subsidize at that level for the small number to keep us in compliance is something we can absorb without any difficulty. However, downrange, we want to make it clear that part-time physicians would not be eligible for benefits, and the responsibility kind of falls on to me to make those numbers of part-time people as few as possible. So in the future, as we hire and as we shape our faculty and staff, we'll do everything we can to try to provide good solid 1.0 FTEs and not have to fool around with this. This only affects a few people, and it won't negatively affect anybody that's currently employed by Maggie Walker. So those are items that we're going to ask you to review and consider, and then we'll vote on them next month.
Great.
All right, let me pull up the next item here. This is my proposal, I'd like to discuss quickly, and I'm going to share this with you, and it's a, it's a presentation, but I promise you, I'm going to go through it rapidly to allow for time to be able to discuss it as, as needed. Initially, the last time we had discussed the return of students, we had targeted February 1st as the return date. Since then, of course, a lot has happened. This is a snapshot from the Virginia Department of Health as of January 18th in terms of the numbers of folks that have been infected with COVID-19 by district. And of course, you guys certainly know your own numbers, the PCR percent positivity for the past 14 days, and this is the most current information the VDH is providing, showing the percentages, although they're starting to go down a little bit over the past few days, which is very, very good news. And I'm sure you all have done this in your own district as well. So if you have any questions about some of the numbers or whatnot, please chime in, but I want to assume that you've probably seen them, since you're making decisions for your own districts that actually supersede ours. Average number of new cases per 100,000. And again, this was as of the 18th, it's a few days ago, the numbers are starting to flatten out. The important stuff are these data points here. We surveyed our family as of January 18th. Our families, 65.6 of them would be willing to return to school, and it's with a very clear understanding that the instructional model that we're going to use, because of our size and smallness, we can't do what some of the districts are doing with the hybrid teaching model. The way we would work it is that students would still bring their laptops to school, they would still receive their information, their instruction through the laptop the same way they've been receiving it since September. The reason being that it's almost impossible for our teachers with some of our classes to teach kids in front of them, kids on a laptop at the same time effectively, and we don't have the ability to pull out teachers to be exclusively teaching in the online environment because of the size of our school and the number of single classes that we have. So we were very, very clear into what it would look like. If you came back to school, you're still receiving instruction the same way you are right now with all of the social distancing pieces in place. It's coming back to school would not look like coming back to school did, you know, in September of last year. With that data, and we were very, very clear in how we communicated it, 65.6% of our kids said they wanted to come back to campus, 34% said they would remain virtual. Along the same lines, the transportation piece, if you did come back and your division was unable to provide transportation, how would you, would you be okay? About 50% said no problem at all. Again, 32.4% here is the number that would be staying home. It doesn't really matter. If available, they would say that they would take the transportation provided by their district. And a very small sliver said that they would need some help. With 590 responses out of 756, we extrapolated that number out a little bit as to what we think it would look like with an overall percentage. And we think we'd be looking about the neighborhood of somewhere between 30 and 40 students that would be requiring transportation if their district did not provide any. Many of those kids reside in districts where your district transportation supervisors have said, we're able to help you out. It's not going to be an issue. So about, bottom line, it's about two-thirds of the kids want to come back. We surveyed the staff. And I said, if students were brought back to campus prior to the opportunity to be vaccinated, how do you feel about, about it? About 35% said they would be willing to come back, but the majority had requested to either stay home for different purposes. One had had the request for the Federal First Coronavirus Response Act, but that's not available anymore. So that number would just get factored into these ones here. But a little bit over one-third would be willing to come back. Same question, though, but if we ask it saying, after you've had the opportunity to receive both doses of the vaccination, how do you feel about coming back to school? 85% said, I'm willing to come back and I'd be okay. Another small percentage, 10% and 5% respectively, said that they would prefer to be able to continue to work from home. A little bit of follow-up information on this. The first piece is those that said they would want to work from home, a few of them have specific medical conditions. But most of them, it's a situation where they have an elderly parent living with them that until the parent gets the vaccination, they're not comfortable being in our environment and then going home. However, they said, once my parents vaccinated, then I would feel a little bit more comfortable. The other thing to consider is of this 15%, not all of them are instructional staff. And I feel confident that if we were able to get 85% of our teachers back on campus, we would be able to operate in a socially distance limited fashion. Along the same lines of the vaccinations, we have partnered up with Richmond Public Schools, who is taking very good care of us. I got to be very honest about that. They're taking very good care about of us. Some of our teachers are actually getting their vaccinations today. And it looks like all of our teachers have the opportunity to get them between now and the tail end folks around January 29th, assuming that the supply of vaccinations holds. And I have no indication yet from our contacts that for this round, that that's not going to be the case. So we're looking at being able to get our entire staff not only, I only know of one person that doesn't want to get the vaccination, but the entire staff getting their first round of vaccinations by the end of January, which exceeds every possible hope and expectation that I would have had when I was actually putting this PowerPoint together a couple of weeks ago. So it's very, very encouraging news. This information you certainly already know, and as of 11/11, and maybe it's changed a little bit in the past 10 days. We are, these are what your districts are doing right now. And you can see we've got a bit of a mix between fully open, partially open, virtual, hybrid. Everyone's doing a little bit of everything. There was a problem loading this page. I don't remember what was on that page, but I'll go back and check. I don't think there was anything controversial. And then these are sort of the pros and cons of what we would do. Virtual is where we are right now, a hybrid attendance. And notice, I specifically call it hybrid attendance and not hybrid instruction, because the instruction would remain delivered in a virtual model. But the hybrid attendance, originally, we were looking at this model of, you know, A through M is coming on certain days and through Z on other certain days. However, after talking to the superintendents this morning, there may be a little bit of a tweak to that model to be able to help out some of our districts with transportation. But the bottom line is half of our kids would come Monday and Tuesday, half of them would come Wednesday and Thursday, and we would remain Friday as virtual and asynchronous. Office hours for teachers, all that type of stuff in the building would receive a nice deep cleaning. Any student can choose to remain virtual for the balance of this school year if they make that choice. And we would not lock them into that decision. Because of our instructional model, it kind of works kind of works to our advantage to be able to keep it the same. Coming to school or staying home wouldn't affect it. So if conditions change and a kid says, well, I want to be at home now, but say by a little further down, they say, I want to come back. They, they're able to do that. And again, I just kind of summarized that. Teachers would be working from campus. Health practices, of course, would change many aspects of school life, including transitions, how they would eat, coming and going. Athletics and classroom capacity procedures are going to be a little different, but these are all things that we're able to, to take on and be successful. So the pros of it and the cons, you know, the, the pros of staying virtual, well, we're already doing it. And certainly there would be, you know, we wouldn't be adding any risk of infection. The cons is it's not a, it's not an ideal learning model, and a lot of our kids have expressed very clearly that they're struggling socially and emotionally. Now, I will say, we're not having some of the problems that I've heard about from other folks. Our attendance, by and large, is solid. Academics, they're doing pretty well. They're keeping up with the content. The grades aren't falling off that far for most, but for some, it has been a very, very difficult situation. And I want to be clear, the idea of proceeding to a hybrid attendance learning model, as soon as it's medically safe following vaccinations, it's, it's not, I'm not doing it with the intent of improving instructions. I would be making the recommendation to be able to provide kids with the social emotional needs that they have, being able to be on campus, being able to be able to see each other, to be able to see us, to have access to school counseling, to have access to our school psychologist in a, in a real space, but socially distanced, safe environment. I think that we really need to try to do that. Obviously, we've heard from the new president, as well as the governor, as well as others, that we need to frame our thinking in terms of getting kids back on campus. And so the choice I'm laying before you today and asking for your support is, you know, you're going to, we need to kind of decide where we want to go with this. My recommendation is that we do not return to in-person learning on February 1st, as we had indicated in November. However, we want to move to the Maggie Walker hybrid attendance model, following the second round of vaccinations. And that would be at a point where we would be able to come back on February 18th and make a final decision on this. I say this with this, and again, I hesitate to throw dates out, but if things go the way they are going now, and we're able to proceed forward, if most of our people that want to get, if our people can get the vaccination the first round by January 28th, 29th, my understanding is that we're getting the Moderna vaccine, which is a four-week spread between the first and second dose. That would put the second dose being completed on or about February 27th. I've been advised by my, my live-in medical advisor at home, who's a nurse down at MCV, that it's about a 10-day period or so after Moderna to be able to get up to the full potential of the vaccine. And that would put us in a position where we could target the idea of putting this model into operation on or about March 15th. I floated this out to the community yesterday. That's kind of a heads up. This is the recommendation I'm making to the board. The responses that I got were positive. And I, you know, I only heard from two or three people, but they were positive responses. And I will say that the last time that I sent out something like this, the responses that I got were much more negative with people that wanted to come back. I think that with the vaccinations and the fact that we're getting them is a huge plus, and it provides some hope for everybody that we can start to return to some sense of familiarity this school year and be able to take care of our seniors, be able to do the right things for our freshmen in a safe socially-distanced environment. And I know some of you have had your teachers on campus since the beginning. And I'm glad that that's worked. And for some of you, maybe you're in the same boat that we're in right here. We're starting to make these choices. But I feel confident in making this recommendation that it's supported by our community. It provides hope. It provides options. If the parents and the students want to come to school, that's great. If they don't want to come to school, that's okay. What I've told the faculty and staff is that I'm willing to work with them this year. If they have extenuating circumstances that require them to remain virtual, we can accommodate that small number of people by utilizing some spaces here, since the students would still be receiving the instruction virtually. And then I would be able to help them out for the balance of the school year. I certainly am unwilling to make any assessment as to what I could do beyond the school year. And I think that that's fair. But I'm also hopeful and optimistic that by the end of this school year, for the majority of people in the 1A, 1B, and maybe even 1C VDH health categories would have had the opportunity to receive the vaccination. So I'm going to stop sharing here so that everyone can see everybody. But my recommendation is that we sort of postpone bringing the kids back with an expectation that on the next school board meeting, when we're all together in February, we will be in a position that we can start to shoot for a potential return of March 15th. And from an operational standpoint, we can do this. We can do this.
Okay, board members, any discussion? Any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. I suggest we move on then to Secretary of Education's recommendation, or now House Bill 2305.
It is now House Bill 2305, and I'm going to share this with you. I have shared along the way that there's been quite a bit of talk and discussion about what the General Assembly was going to do. And I'm going to share with you now House Bill 2305. And this is what, it hit LIS this morning, and it said it was filed on, looks like on Tuesday by Delegate Tyler, who is in the Brunswick area, that sort of south, south side to the west is his, the zone for that delegate. The original language that we saw was, was targeting Maggie Walker and TJ with some very specific guidelines, and I wouldn't even call them guidelines, I guess requirements. And what has been put before the House is something that is radically different than what we were led to believe was going to happen. And I'm not making any political judgment on that whatsoever. It's just, we didn't get any heads up on this until we literally saw it within the past 48 hours. But that's the language there. I'm not going to read it to you. I don't think that that's required, but essentially the gist of it is that they want to pass a law that will require the Board of Education to issue guidance to all of the academic-year governor schools, that would be all 19 of us, on ways to improve our diversity and ways to help our underserved and underrepresented students gain access. It would also require the Board to provide guidance to the local districts on how to strengthen their pipelines, including access to gifted education classes through middle school, and I would assume that would stretch back into elementary. And then it asks for conducting programs. It requires the Board to conduct programs to evaluate our diversity, equity, and inclusion. But it would also include collaborating with all relevant stakeholders, including local school boards, regional governor school boards, and governor school directors. So this is what is before the House Committee on Education at this point. And I will just kick back and, you know, certainly encourage the Board to discuss it. I'm going to stop sharing. Well, I'll leave it up there for a little bit.
Dr. Lowry, I'm, I'm sorry, did somebody else?
After you, Ms. Ogborne.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know that I've heard from Bev Lammy, who is our legislative liaison. And she has been talking to the JT Kessler at VSBA, as I know. Mr. Wright, you'll fill us in on that, your conversation with him. But I have asked Ms. Lammy to follow this and keep us apprised if there are any changes, et cetera. I have to say, I'm very surprised at the language that was ultimately chosen because they had, Secretary Carney has obviously diverted from very specific guidance to asking, now punting, I think. It's like, okay, now I'm asking the Board, you know, the DOE to issue some guidance. And I would love to know why the change. My only guess is, is he couldn't get a patron for the original bill, because, I mean, it was quite controversial, I think, trying to issue guidance and tell us how to do the work that we are obviously trying to do. But I would be, I hope we will be able to, you know, sort of glean some insight from Ms. Lammy and others who are. So if, I know it is now on the radar of our legislative liaisons, I would ask the other districts to do the same. If you have a legislative liaison, put this on their radar so that they can be watching it, they can follow any changes and give feedback as is necessary or possible.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. And board members, so that you know, Mrs. Ogborne and I, along with Dr. Cashwell, had a meeting with Secretary Carney oh, what, mid-December, I think. And in that meeting, he went through a lot of the thought processes of why they wanted to do this, which I think we all sort of understood and agreed to, and then how he wanted to do that. And that, I believe, is where there was a bit more debate. He couched this piece of now legislature, well, this proposed legislative bill. Anyway, he proposed this because he thought that what the work that they did with TJ on their admissions process had kind of gone well, and they did it in very much the same lens. When we spoke with him, we pointed out that this being a regional school board is very different than a school like TJ that is governed by one single school board, that being Fairfax County. And we went over the variety of issues that were presented by a regional school board, a very small district like mine versus a large district like Mrs. Ogborne's. We talked about what that meant and how things would and could work. And ultimately, he pointed out that this was merely guidance. And I don't know that I was 100% comfortable that it was merely guidance. But I did appreciate the fact that they began the conversation for us. And I think that's, we all are aware that this is a subject that we need to address. It's probably the most important thing that we're going to do as a board, long-term, in the next year or two. And so, you know, I'm glad that the conversation has started with this. I too am rather surprised at how this has all been worded. Some of it, I think, is softened from what we were presented. Some of it, I think, is actually more aggressive than what we were presented. And so, as it reads, I'm not a huge fan of this legislation, but that is my, my opinion solely. I did have an opportunity also to speak with JT Kessler from the VSBA. I probably spoke with him for about an hour. He expressed his concerns. Primarily, they centered around the idea of local control, which I think is something that we all are sensitive to. He asked, you know, what we wanted them to do. And I told him that I couldn't speak for the entire board, but that I would raise it with all of you. He made an offer, or actually, I suggested that he make himself available to us if we would want to talk to him about this. We could schedule a time or a meeting to have an informational issue. He could join us at our next board meeting. I've not really heard back from him about that. But I know that he's there and available to you as board members. And so as Ms. Ogborne asked you to, to keep an eye on the legislation, I also would encourage you to get in touch with JT Kessler at VSBA and express your concerns or ask your questions with him, because I think it's important. And obviously, each district is going to have different pain points with this. So I want to make you aware of that. And I do want to also add one other thing. When we spoke with him, Dr. Carney, I mentioned the fact that we have been advocating for a change in the funding model for governor schools, full-time governor schools. And then I asked if any change may be dependent on the legislation that he wanted to propose. He very quickly said no, but I still have the distinct feeling that that is going to be the the stick to this carrot and stick game is, is going to be funding. And if we outwardly have issues with, with Outwardly have issues with, with what's happening here. That we may not see a lot of movement when it comes to funding. I do want to point out that there would be absolutely. No movement on funding in this. General Assembly session. It would only be in future ones where that would either be. Even be a consideration. So. I'm sorry, I know that was a lot of conversation. I'm happy to open up the floor for discussion or comment.
Mr. Chair, just the one thing I would say is that the, the things that we've already put in our strategic plan. Far surpass this piece of legislation. We, we are, we are doing what I know is the right thing to do. We are partnering with our, our districts. Your gifted coordinators are working hard on these issues. We know that they're real. You know, it's, it's a. I, I echo your statement. I was very surprised to see the language come out in this fashion. I suspect from a political standpoint, the Northern Virginia component of. Of TJ probably. Were, were a little more vocal in the process, those delegates and the people they represent. Since we weren't quite sure what it was going to look like, but. You know, whether this is passed or not, in, in all honesty, just to be. Very candid and frank, makes no difference to me whatsoever. I know that we are doing the right thing with our strategic plan. We are. Working to increase diversity. We are putting the pieces in place to support and welcome everybody. We are improving our outreach with our partner districts. Some of those districts have already started making some major changes to how they go about doing things. We're, we're going to, we're going to achieve the right outcome regardless of. Wherever this ends up, because I feel that it's a. I feel that the legislation is very, very vague and I think it is intentionally so. But that's not going to impact or change the course in the direction that we're headed in right now, so.
That's well said. Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any, I think we'll, we'll move ahead then. So that brings us to the new course proposal, Dr. Lowry.
Yep, I'm going to pull that up for you real quickly. And this is just a, a great opportunity that we have to be able to offer. Another course here at Maggie Walker. One second, hold on, there it is. And basically, what we're looking for is a topics in photography class. VCU limits our, our enrollment. Be based on grades and this, like, we can't put, so I'm sorry, I'm kind of talking to myself. VCU has changed their policy. We can't put anybody that's not an eleventh grader or a twelfth grader into a VCU dual enrollment class, but photography. Our VCU class has been very, very, very popular. So what we are doing is essentially taking that same class, the VCU course. Except it's going to go ahead and flex it out a little bit that'll allow our freshmen and sophomores to take the class. It is not dual enrollment. It would just be one Maggie Walker credit. But we were able to confirm with the state DOE that it would count as a fine art studio class. Which means it would fulfill a fine art requirement for graduation, which is wonderful news. So we're basically taking an existing course, tweaking it out a little bit. There's some details in the course description there. Dr. Ellis can certainly answer any questions that anybody would have. But it's going to continue to allow our students who have an interest in photography be able to take that class. Without being tied to the constraints of VCU's requirements.
Okay. Great. Any comments or questions?
And it was supported by the planning committee. I guess I should toss that out there. Wouldn't, wouldn't have made it to you if it didn't.
Thank you, Dr. Lowry. So then that, I believe, brings us to our information items here.
Yep, and I can roll through them very, very quickly for all of us here. I'm just going to share them up there so you can follow along. These are just items for your information and you can certainly click on them to, to flush them out a little bit if you want to. The finance committees minutes are attached there from our January seventh meeting. Our debate team, despite the COVID situation, has qualified. For the state championship through the VCFL, which is, which is really wonderful news. We are also doing very well in our math modeling competitions. We've got students that were chosen for the all-district course. If you haven't seen a virtual choir concert or a band concert yet. It's really, really neat. I, I encourage you to do that if your districts are providing those opportunities. Pretty cool. And speaking of, of our meager winter sports season, our aquatic dragons are one and O. They won their first, their first swim meet. With swim, basketball and. Wrestling and track. We'll, we'll be lucky if we can get three or four contests throughout the whole season. We don't know if that's going to qualify us for regionals or not, but at least we've been able to provide our students with the opportunity. To participate in athletics. That is the extent of the information. I can certainly entertain any questions if anybody has any. Otherwise, I believe that section is complete.
Great, thank you, Dr. Lowry. So then that's going to bring us, board members, to the Superintendent Steering Committee report. Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Just a few. Few summary comments. We had strong representation by our superintendents this morning, so thanks to everyone who was in attendance for the, that conversation. We've talked about much of what we discussed in this call here today, including the vaccination of staff. Plans for in-person learning, including some transportation questions that were asked by a member of school divisions. We also discussed a proposed tuition increase that would impact us locally, as well as the overall budget for Maggie Walker. And all of that in preparation for the budget work session to take place in February.
Great, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Let's see, I do not believe we have any need for a closed meeting, do we, Dr. Lowry?
No, sir.
Great, so. Are there any announcements? That we need to make, Dr. Lowry?
No, sir, not from my end. I guess I would just say the next regional school board meeting is the eighteenth of February.
Right.
And the superintendent's meeting will take place prior to that meeting.
That's great, thank you very much. So then that brings us to my favorite agenda item. Adjournment. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayers.
So, Dr. Lowry, are you going to take pictures?
Oh, yes, we've been requested to take a, a board picture. And I think the easiest way for us to do this, the easiest way for us to do this is after the adjournment. If you are a board member, just stay on the call. If you are not a board member, go ahead and hop off the call. And then I will screenshot this wonderful group photo that we have. And we will, we will frame it up and put together an appropriate media press release. Be done with it. I think, I think that you, now this is something that years from now, we will look back on and.
Yeah.
Board picture from two thousand and twenty-one.
I, I love it, I love it. But we do have a motion and a second on the floor, so. Board members, all in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm certain there are no opposition.
So if you are not a board member, thank you so much for your participation. If you are, if you could stay on.